The Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice.
This is the meeting for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Gaffer Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. We have one item under consent agenda. It's an approval for a special designated liquor license for the Players' Cup Golf. The tournament is to be held July 18th from 12 to 9:00, and July 19th, 11 to 11:00, and July 20th from 11 to 10:00. The Players' Golf Course is located at 12101 Deer Creek Drive, Omaha, Douglas County. There are motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Any questions or comments? Anyone here wishing to speak on this item?
Motion passes.
Next item is our public hearing on our budget. The budget hearing and adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. And I will ask our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Joe Lorenz, to give us a short summary of where we are.
The budget that's submitted for approval is a proposed budget of $323,900,000, which is 2.7 million or 0.8 percent lower than the budget for the year just ended on June 30th, 2013. The general fund budget of $169 million is 1.8 million or 1 percent lower than the current year budget. The great majority of offices and departments have budgets which are flat or below the previous year. As we put the budget together on revenue assumptions, the assumption given to us by the county assessor was that overall county property valuations will be flat. There were revenue shortfalls for operations supported by property tax which were, on an apples-to-apples basis, 5.5 million lower than the previous year, driven primarily by decreases in grant funding and lower revenues from prisoners at the jail. To achieve a balanced budget while maintaining the previously established levels of reserves would require a tax rate increase of 1.6 cents. And so that's the overall summary of the budget. There was a PowerPoint presentation posted on the county website, and that was also submitted as part of this budget submittal.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. The chairs of the Finance Committee, do you have any comments, Commissioner Morgan or Commissioner Duda?
Nope.
You know, the only thing I'd say is, I know we're going to have the public hearing, and I have some things I'll say later, but I want to listen.
Do you want me to take that first?
Yeah.
Public hearing first?
Sure.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the budget as presented at this point?
Good morning, Commissioners. R.J. Brown, 2116 South 91st Street. I'm taking care of my mother's house for the time being. I'd like to bring up suggestions, three of them, that would save you that $2.7 million. One is refinance your bonds at the lowest rates, which will be one of them that makes a large amount of money. The second one is your cash reserve. You can use some of that with a mix of it. And the third thing that you've already committed is inheritance tax, but there's still a little bit of money in that inheritance tax that you can work on, too. Those are the three best ideas, and I think that you could flatten this one. And I think, basically, the economy's coming strong, and I think this flat projection is not exactly right, because the economy's starting to pick up, the houses are starting to pick up, and they're selling quite a bit of property in the county. So I can say that flat projection's a little bit off, too. Thank you.
Thank you, R.J. Anyone else wishing to speak?
John McAllister, 8010 Hickory Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I think we're all familiar with the Oliver Wendell Holmes quote, that taxes are what we pay for a civilized society. But on the other hand, what people expect is for our representatives to be frugal with our tax money. The budget process that I've watched here at Douglas County is woefully inadequate. Wasn't rigorous, strategic, or admirable in any way. The board passed by some obvious ways to decrease the budget. First off, the overtime is continuing to go up and would be an easy way for the board to decrease the amount of taxes needed. Secondly, and incredibly obvious, is the Corrections Department. As demand continues to lag, I think you could save easily a half a million to a million dollars by downsizing the organization to accommodate the folks that you'll need to house. And I think the Greyhound building is another way. You shouldn't be speculating on buildings. Unless there's a clear use for that building, that would be a way for you to save some large dollars. While I was disappointed with the process, there's still time for the Douglas County Board to get the message and not raise the property taxes. It's only, it's less than 1 percent of, the shortfall's only 1 percent of Douglas County's budget. So you ought to be able to save that amount without even breaking a sweat. So with that, I would encourage you to vote down any kind of tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. Doug Kagan, 12320 Williams Street, speaking for Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. It's crunch time now for the county fiscal year budget, and we think that Commissioners have a clear choice. This board can either cut more spending or raise our property taxes. For several weeks, we've worked with Commissioners and the county administration to assemble a budget that would not cause a tax hike. Knowing that the county faces a structural deficit nightmare that will recur annually, we ask you to put the brakes on spending this next fiscal year, then continue to work with us and your other constituents on long-range solutions to the structural deficit. Today, we directly ask you that you make additional budget cuts to preclude a tax increase to not fund several non-mandated, non-necessities. We are hereby offering you a variety of possible spending reductions that are doable, even if only for the next fiscal year. And I think you all have copies of our white paper. I clearly recall last year when the board pleaded with the state legislature to not eliminate the inheritance tax, that you needed it to fund necessary, deserving expenditures. They then earmarked $500,000 annually to fund a UNMC project, not the responsibility of the county. If you do not agree with our recommendations, you easily can find your own budget cuts. We ask you to not only consider the welfare of your employees, but also the savings of citizen constituents who elected you. Last year, Commissioners filled in a larger budget gap than this year, and we believe that you can do it again without a tax increase. Go back to the drawing board, we ask, and work with us to find additional budget cuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Jeff Stevens, 14518 Webster Circle, and I volunteer for Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Some factors contributing to the proposed budget shortfall are beyond the control of county Commissioners. Property valuations are flat, and significant reductions in some non-tax revenues are occurring. Challenging times for sure, nonetheless, we must adopt a budget. How this budget is resolved may also set the tone for the foreseeable future, given the likelihood of ongoing economic challenges that affect the budget. Unfortunately, examination of portions of the budget within our control reveals the frustrations that many citizens experience when dealing with the public sector. A bias toward the growth of government, regardless of mandates or economic conditions, a perception that alternative means of performing public sector operations is unworkable, and benefit of the doubt as to the propriety of any and all public sector activities. Examples of these frustrations can be found in the proposed Douglas County budget. The board is not focusing on HMA recommendations that will bring financial transparency to the Health Center, but are expanding its operations in the hope of increasing revenues. Department of Corrections will no longer house ICE detainees, but the proposed budget does not reflect the associated decrease in the demands on the correction facility, especially personnel costs. The board has assumed additional financial obligations in the form of contributions to UNMC Cancer Center and the purchase of the Greyhound Terminal. These two items represent roughly one-third of the projected budget shortfall. No doubt, the baseline budgets for future years will spend these tax dollars elsewhere after these obligations have been fulfilled. The county continues to perform or support non-mandated services while proposing a tax increase. These services include the county extension and a law library. Accountability in the form of auditing is insufficient and does not include performance measures. The Health Center financial information provided to HMA did not assign cost to the various departments within the facility. HMA concluded that timely management decisions could not be made from the available data. The board has also not considered privatization, either generally or targeted, as a means to reduce cost, or at least to provide a reality check for the cost of public services. For the county board to propose a tax increase without addressing the need for financial reform reinforces the perception that the interests of the government do not correspond with the interest of the citizens. The civics schizophrenia diminishes our self-governing society and can only be corrected by government re-establishing trust with the citizens they claim to represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board during the public hearing? Good morning, Harvey.
Hi. Harvey Sankey, 3204 North 157th Street. What I want to ask here is, basically, for what specific purpose are we buying the Greyhound Terminal with taxpayers' dollars? Is it to construct the building today, tomorrow, next year? When? Or are we speculating on what may occur in the future? I understand that this is based on a study by HDR to create a master plan for the Douglas County Justice System, which was completed in December of 2006. This study is now seven years old. A lot has happened since then. I don't think the county should be in the business of buying property for speculative purposes with the taxpayers' money. The $500,000 purchase is for closing costs and the actual purchase of the property. What about other costs? Have we considered those, like the demolition of the building? How about the EPA? Have they come in to look at this building? I wonder if there are some gas tanks underneath this building. If there aren't, then that's fine. But if there are, the EPA should be in here to take a look at it, to see if there are any spills or anything underneath us that we might be encountering in the future. And then, if we do not purchase this property, can we still expand? Or is this property will hold us up for future expansion? We're only talking about a little corner here. There are a lot of other lots available out there, and a lot of other alternatives if you want to expand. But by us not buying this property, will this prevent us from expanding if we need to in the future? What reason are we buying this property for? Specifically, what purpose? I'd like to know that. And the other thing is, if we go ahead with this purchase, I know Commissioner Boyle was thinking about this last time, alternatives on how to conduct this transaction. Let's say we do buy this property, five years, ROI, $100,000 a year. Why don't we consider using some of the reserve funds that we have now to buy this property? In other words, take, not to specifically buy the property, but reserve funds to reduce our potential tax increase here, and then add back to the reserve fund the revenues we get from this property.
Thank you, Harvey.
I don't know if we could do that or not. Anyway, that's my, those are my thoughts, and...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir, John?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Sheehan, Director of the Community Mental Health Center, and I'm here with a last-minute request for $150,000 to be added to my budget for this year. When I submitted my flatline budget on the 1st of April, I had no plans to be here today, but two significant events have occurred over the last three months that require me to be here. Number one, one of our physicians suffered a medical event at the end of April that has resulted in her not being at work for the last two and a half months, and we have no idea when she will return. So I have a physician who is encumbering a slot that I can't fill right now with a permanent replacement, but she's not working, and so I have three physicians left that are doing the work of four psychiatrists at the Community Mental Health Center. Three weeks ago, I got a letter of resignation from another psychiatrist. So one of the three has resigned effective the 15th of August. So I'm looking at having only two psychiatrists on my staff starting the 15th of August, and that's a situation that is very difficult with an inpatient facility. Outpatient services will result in those psychiatrists literally being on-call every other night, and that's a situation that you can't tolerate for more than a week or two, and we're looking at probably three to four months of being in that situation. We have advertised for a new full-time psychiatrist to replace the one who's resigned. We have one application so far that appears to be a very strong candidate. Those applications close the 2nd of August. For most current psychiatrists in practice, they require a 90-day notice to their employer, so that means that we would not have someone starting with us full-time until about the 1st of November. So we're looking at going from August 15th to the 1st of November, a period of about two and a half months, with only two psychiatrists. So I'm asking for $150,000. $50,000 is to increase our on-call pay, because we'd like to have some psychiatrists help us with our on-call responsibilities, but we have found that in town, our on-call pay lags behind what the other hospitals in town are offering. We also may possibly need the services of a temporary psychiatrist, which will require us to go through a locum tenens firm, and those firms are pretty expensive to work with, but it's, I think, an alternative that we have no choice about if we are going to continue to offer the services that we do now. So that's what the other $100,000 is for. A locum tenens psychiatrist costs about $10,000 a week, so that gives us about 10 weeks' worth of coverage, and that carries us from the middle of August through the 1st of November, when hopefully we have, we'll have at least one more psychiatrist on the staff, and we'll know what's happening with the other psychiatrist, and if we're able to hire a second, we'll be able to hire a second. So that's my request for another $150,000 for the Community Mental Health Center budget. I apologize for coming late. With this request, these events only occurred, well, the one occurred two months ago. We thought she was going to be back, we thought we were going to be able to make it, and then the other resignation happened only two and a half weeks ago. So this was the soonest I could tell you about this.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
John, I know we talked about this a couple of weeks ago at the meeting on Monday morning out at the Health Center. I'm just wanting us to at least have a little discussion. So when you said, you know, you didn't plan to be here, the money was there for the four people.
Correct.
And two of them are gone.
Well, one of them is...
Is injured.
Is injured, but she still gets about 70 percent of her pay while she's injured.
And the other one resigned.
The other one resigned effect...
As of August 15.
As of August, right. And she'll leave, she officially departs the 1st of September, so we'll pay her through the 1st of September.
Okay, so I'm trying to see if we had the money there for the four, basically, but we're using 70 percent because of the injury situation. Would that need still be the $150,000, or is it because the cost is so much more trying to hire? I know we talked about that, too. I'm trying to think, it shouldn't, it wouldn't seem like it'd be that much.
Well, there is some money when you figure we have to pay 70 percent of her salary as it is. That leaves about $3,000 a month, or, I'm sorry, $3,000 a week.
A week?
A week. No, I'm sorry. It's not, no, that's not right. It's $3,000 a month, so that's $750 a week that we would get from that individual's pay. The other one, we would have her salary, $13,000, for two months in September and October until we hire the new psychiatrist.
Right, but wouldn't that have already been in the budget before, if she hadn't resigned?
Yes. So that $26,000 is there, yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the 150. It just doesn't seem like it should be that much, but it may just be me not calculating the numbers right.
Okay. $50,000 is to increase, is to increase the on-call pay, so we could get other psychiatrists in town to help with on-call. The other $100,000 is $10,000 a week for 10 weeks equals $100,000. And if we are, if we don't need to use that money for temporary psychiatrists, we could also use it to pay a headhunter firm to hire a new psychiatrist for us if we're unable to find a psychiatrist in town. We've been fortunate up to now that we've been able to find someone locally to fill our vacancies, but I'm making sure I'm covering all the possibilities here, and if we're unable to find somebody locally, we may have to find a firm to help us find somebody, and that may be $20,000 to $30,000 as a fee to find a psychiatrist for us.
All right. Patrick?
Sorry, multitasking right now. John, does the 66 percent for workers' compensation for this employee who's off come out of the county's administration's workers' compensation, a risk management budget, or is that being applied to your budget?
I've been told that it comes out of the risk management budget to start with, and then we reimburse that fund about three months in arrears.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, one of the questions that I had was just a couple of weeks ago, so we knew this was going on, and yet we came forward with a $170,000 request to go forward with electronic health records. So we really should, if this was the priority, then we should have probably used that money for this. So really, we're not only increasing 150, but we've also encumbered the 170,000. Now, I did ask whether or not that 170,000 can be used, diverted back to this rather than an additional 150,000, and staff was supposed to be looking into that. Did we find out whether or not we could do that?
Yeah, we looked into the encumbrance policy, and it's more just an internal financial control policy, not a matter of state law, or, so it's not really a legal issue, it's just a, an accounting policy issue. So in looking at it, what probably the, rather than, since we don't, encumbrances are just there for a specific project, the way to really, we would recommend doing it is that you would just cancel the encumbrance and then add this amount to the budget, and so from a impact on the financial balance sheet, that would have the same impact.
So basically, we would only need to encumber out of the 170,000, that's earmarked, 150,000 of it for, or even less than that, for the psychiatrist cost.
Yeah, I don't think you would do it via encumbrance. What you would do, I think, is cancel the encumbrance and then take the 150,000 and add that to his budget.
Leave it in his budget, because it was in his budget.
But it would be a supplement.
Okay, but just so we're clear, that money was in the budget. It was going to be turned back, but instead it was encumbered for electronic health records.
It was encumbered from last year's fund, so it was in last year's budget.
Last year's budget, right. Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
The, it's, my recollection is, and you have a much better memory than I do, but the electronic health records, I thought, was, first of all, something that was going to be very useful and very helpful and save us some money. And I, is there going to be some use among other departments as well, or not?
Mm-mm.
Okay, so I mean, is the, is it such a situation that we have to stop and cancel the electronic health records and use the money for this situation? Is that what we're thinking?
That's what my suggestion would be, and again, it's just kind of the, what's the priority here?
Yeah.
Is the priority the electronic health record, or is it right now to get staffed for what they say they need to be staffed in psychiatrists over there, and then take the issue of electronic health records at another time?
Well, you know, John, what do you think?
Well, my priority is the psychiatrists, for sure.
All right. Well, I think we ought to follow your lead, then.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to add one comment if I could. I think this is, you know, when the comment is made about controlling overtime and so forth, you know, this is what we're talking about, a situation where we have a psychiatrist who needs to be hired, and we have to go out at, what, $10,000 a month?
A week.
A week. So $10,000 a week is kind of a big overtime price, but this is what we have to do to staff the facility, provide the services for people who need psychiatric care. So when you look at something that falls into that budget, this is what it is. So this is not some, you know, we're not paying somebody extra time to oversee a group of people, you know, hanging out in the lobby or something. So I mean, these expenses are real, and they're necessary. We do our very best to try to control them.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I would concur with Commissioner Boyle. These are the necessary components we have to have. I mean, you've got to have the psychiatrist there, or we don't function. I mean, you can't have a community mental health center without a psychiatrist on duty. I feel bad, though, if we make electronic health records, be the victim for this. We've known that we've needed electronic health records for a long time. It's gotten a lot cheaper. We've made some good progress, I believe, on getting there, and we know it will make us more efficient long-term. I would, I'm sorry that we choose to sacrifice the electronic health records, and particularly to say we'll come back and talk about it later, that's pretty disingenuous. If we kill it, we kill it. We're not going to have money again at a later date to come back for these things. This was a one-time opportunity, that there was money left in their own budget to cover this, and we are going to take advantage of that opportunity, and I hate to see us let that slip away, because I don't see another opportunity coming. I would like to see us push forward with the electronic health records as well. I think it's a worthwhile investment. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I hope this doesn't explode into, oh-my-God responses...
Well, I, I hope this doesn't explode into, oh, my God, responses. But I think there could be a way to weasel some money out of other spending. And two things that I can see, or one thing I could see being reduced, if we were to take a combination of $170,000 out of the accreditation programs at Corrections and Sheriffs and squeeze $170,000 out of that, we could fund the electric health, electronic health records. And I think we could do that. And I would suggest that we, that we do it.
Comments on any other comments? And again, the reason I bring this up is because I just find it, you know, if we knew the psychiatrist was an issue, and we did, because the one doctor hadn't come back, and yet we don't bring that forward when, instead, we bring the electronic health record. And I'm not saying we don't need it. I'm saying that's good. That was a recommendation. We should be looking at it. But again, if you've got two things on the table at 170,000 and 150,000, and we're trying to cut rather than add, which one do we pick in order to fund that? And in my opinion, if the psychiatrists are needed to run that operation, we can't go with any other professional level of mental health provider to do any part of what we need over there, then I would say that, to me, you're telling me that that's the priority. And so I would say to convert the dollars that we have, rather than creating, trying to find more dollars somewhere to fund what we need. I don't feel it's disingenuous at all to say we would come back and talk about electronic health record, because again, it's all about priorities and it's all about need. And it's all about following those recommendations and seeing where we are. We knew we couldn't do all of them. We couldn't implement all of them when the report came out. So we're picking and choosing what we want to move forward with. And so again, I think that if the dollars are there right now encumbered for another reason, we scrap that and put it towards the psychiatrists if that's what is so dire needed over there at this time. Commissioner Rogers?
I mean, I just wanted to add, I don't, you know, I personally don't think we need to scrap it. But I do agree with the chair that we should just make the money change. I think, I think 170 will make itself there. And I think we should probably talk about it at the next meeting. I mean, realistically, I mean, I know you got to ask, because you, it wouldn't be, you would be doing your job. But, you know, realistically, it's hard to make that switch at this hour in time. I mean, that's my personal deal. So I think it's something we should continue to do. And I think it'll, I think we can make it, I think we can make it happen. So I agree with the switch the chair's saying for the current time.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I don't know if I can get the figures here on my iPad. So I'll ask Joe Lorenz. I believe the correction budget is $32,863,000. And if we took $85,000 out of that, and they could decide whether they were going to take that from accreditation or not. And if Sheriff's budget, I can't believe it's this low, 2.4 million. I don't know which.
No, I think you're looking at the, I have for the Sheriff's budget 13,833,000.
Well, if we took $85,000 out of each of those budgets and suggested, of course, to Corrections, we can be more than suggesting that it come out of accreditation program. Or if, you know, I mean, we could make it a strong suggestion, but if he decides that he wants it to come out of something else, that's his decision. But, and the sheriff, of course, could do whatever he wants to do, but tell him that we're taking 85,000 out. And then we could fund this very desirable electronic health records program. And I think those two budgets are large enough to stand that $85,000 hit. I think they have programs, specifically accreditation, that will not, will not implode, will not fail with that kind of a reduction. I don't think it will. So I would, I would make a motion that we reduce, I don't know if it's appropriate this time, Madam Chair?
No, not yet. It's still in the public, but write it down. So yeah.
Okay, I will. And I'll rely on Joe to give me those figures again when the time comes. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing?
Good morning. Mary Ann, I hope you had a good vacation in Boston.
I did. It was wonderful.
Enjoy. I want to thank Mark Foxall for returning my call Friday, I know. We were busy for the holidays and so forth, you know. Thank you, Mr. Foxall. I'm a little disappointed. You know, we've had several people work on a white paper. I haven't had one comment from any of the commissioners, you know. Disappointing. You know, we spent several hours. I'm involved in many projects and probably spent hours on hours trying to develop the white papers so you can look at different avenues from citizens that pay your bill. So that's not on my agenda. But anyway, as I understand it, we may not have the votes to pass, not pass an increase in our taxes. In other words, some commissioners want to own the sandwich shop and make their own sandwiches by union employees. Okay? In fact, a lot of budget shortfall by departments because of labor and benefits costs of 66% that hurt each department and takeaway dollars that they could use to fund their departments. Guaranteed CPI and step increases need to stop, which will allow more money for Douglas County Services and to balance the budget in several departments. For instance, we have a thousand, a million dollars sitting there from Bus Department and UMC. And we're talking needing money for $170,000 for a psychiatrist. Didn't make sense to me. Okay? For 2013, the cost of living for senior citizens was calculated 1.7%, or an extra $21 for our pockets. The average social security check is $1,230. And in 2010 and 2011, people on social security received zero amount. But county employees received CPI increases and step increases during that time. Just this year alone, on the average, OPPD increased $7.30, MUD $2.95. Because I live in Millard, where you live, Mary Ann, we're looking at an increase for a bond of $4.38 a month. And then we were asked to fund a shortfall in Douglas County. In other words, 80% of that $20 that the average senior citizen got, 80% is taken with those. So doesn't allow much for gas, food, and other incidentals. Also, I'd like to mention Correction facilities over several months has taken a hit in revenue, okay? In regards to INS inmates, but no adjustments have been made in personnel. Okay? With a loss for an extra of $3 million, I think it is time to start laying people off or furlough them.
Thank you.
What I hope you understand today, that any increases without cost savings in wages and benefit will be judged by you today and in the future.
Thank you, Marty. Commissioner Rogers?
No, I mean, Marty, I just wanted to respond to the comment about the white paper. Now, I, you know, I didn't get it through the email, but I mean, I've heard the white paper for the last two months. I'm thinking in regards to the ideas and some stuff you presented. So, I mean, I just, I'm saying in defense, I don't think the board has a serious considered stuff that's been there. I mean, as far as response, I think the response has happened every time you all have been in the dialogue, when it's been in a public meeting, in the finance committee meeting. I mean, there's been, it's heard. But let's say, for example, the step increase. I mean, yeah, it's an idea there on paper, but, you know, that's been talked about. That's, that's no control. I mean, we have no control over that. So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm just saying to some extent, that it's a great idea, but it's an option that can be exercised. And so that's a whole nother battle, I think, with statute state and a whole lot of other things. So, and to the other point about layoffs, I mean, I think it's fair to say there's somewhere between 150 and 200 people that have, you know, gone for the roles for the last year. So, you know, I'm saying in defense of the fact that a lot of these things have been looked at, I think, over a three- to four-year period. And, you know, suggestions have been taken seriously and measured on what's best and what can be done. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Hey, Marty. Just for the record, following up what Commissioner Rogers said, you know, the Sheriff's seized asset fund, which we had a discussion in one of our four- or five-hour sessions up in room 903, we did take seized asset money to have them doing their work outside. Mary Ann and I both met with the sheriff outside of the office to talk about that specific item. So we've taken what you've said and we're going to continue to look at it from the state mandates that you also pointed out, lobbying on those items. So I don't want you to think that we haven't paid attention to the suggestions and respected those suggestions also. Some we can't do, like having the sheriff doing outside security in the courts or those kinds of things were mandated to do. But we are taking what you say seriously, and we respect your organization and all citizens that come here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that I, Marty, as far as the white paper goes, one of the things we still need to do is we always have provided a written response to the items. And I'll work with staff to do that. But your items really, truly were looked at during the budgeting process. One of the things with Corrections is a few years ago, the overtime was off the charts. And the decision was made to, in order to reduce that, to hire a new, to get them fully funded so that the overtime would go down. We knew realistically that you would never be able to wipe out overtime altogether. We may be able to improve on that. But being fully staffed in order to take care of all of the things that caused overtime, we provided that funding to Corrections to do that. So even though the population has decreased, there are still the same things that need to be done over at Corrections that were caused or paid for by overtime are now paid for by being fully staffed. And we maintain that. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to look to see if our numbers continue to go down, whether or not we don't need to hire anymore. But right now, that was a strategic move in order to reduce the overtime from what it was a few years ago. So we've got more work to do on that overtime, but it has come down a few years. The strategic plan comment has been made a couple of times. And this board knows I've been big on that. We've tried it a couple of times. And I'm glad to tell you that our CAO has put forth the opportunity to do that again, or the willingness to look at that and do it again. And not only by departments, but for us as a board to look at it and come up with that strategic plan for our county as a whole, try to incorporate all of those. So I'm happy to hear that that will happen. And again, parts of your white paper will be used as those discussions, because obviously budget will be discussed during that strategic planning process. So, but we'll, we'll get the written response as we always do.
Thank you.
I was in Boston, so I couldn't do it.
First of all, Commissioner Rogers, with all due-
Could you state your name?
Yeah, sure. Laura McCormick, 336 Beverly. With all due respect, I'm a regular emailer, and I know that you all get my emails, including you, Commissioner Rogers. And I know that the email addresses that were used are the same email addresses that I use. So I believe that Dr. Sheehan just made a supplemental budget request. How many days are we into the new budget period? I asked how many supplemental budget requests have been made by the juvenile courts months ago. I'm still waiting. I guess I would say we need strategic planning, like now, not yesterday. But here, there are my formal comments. I am speaking in opposition to the proposed mill levy increase. Numerous ideas for cost reduction have been identified by everyday citizens, but none of the proposed ideas have been embraced by the commissioners, not a single suggestion. In fact, one of the commissioners on this board mocked fiscal conservatives like myself by referring to us as buffoons. One such suggestion includes the elimination of the law library located in the courthouse. The elimination of this non-mandated, non-mandated service would net at least $150,000 in savings per year. This figure is a before-employee benefit calculation. The services offered by the library are redundant, not easily accessible by the public, as the library is only open 8:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday. And services offered can be accessed at UNO Library or Creighton Law. Both facilities offer far superior hours and collections. The law library should be eliminated. In addition, it makes little sense for commissioners to engage in speculative acquisition of property. The Greyhound bus terminal will cost us $500,000. The idea seems to be that if we buy it, we will need it someday. The Great Platte River Archway was built in accordance with the idea that if we build it, people will need it. People will come. Now, more than 13 years after the facility first opened, the Archway Foundation filed for bankruptcy. The foundation is seeking approval to renegotiate a $20 million bond obligation by offering bondholders pennies on the dollar. In 2002, bondholders wrote off $40 million in debt. Now the foundation seeks forgiveness on the remaining $20 million. Please, I beg you, reconsider the acquisition of the Greyhound bus terminal. With all due respect, commissioners, and I'm wrapping up, please demonstrate a commitment to fiscal responsibility by holding the line on the mill levy. Please make a commitment to the people of this county to prioritize strategic planning and cost control. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Now, I do have the option to close the public hearing. And we do have the option to take action. If I were to close the public hearing, then, anyone wishing to speak or make a motion on the adoption of the 1314 budget? Commissioner Morgan? Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyle?
I'll yield to finance fellow.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Morgan?
Well, I was going to suggest in listening to the citizens and also discussion with Mr. Lorenz over the weeks, and I know he started almost six months ago, talking to us about the budget, giving us our first proposal, all the commissioners, as we started work. So we haven't worked on it weeks. We've worked on it for many, many months. There is an alternative that's painful that I'll offer. I think it would cause us some challenges, and all the departments' challenges, certainly. And that would be to move toward a 1% reduction in all budgets. I can see Don flying straight out for me, who runs an excellent county attorney department, very efficient with excellent employees. Would cause backups and those kinds of things. But I would offer it as an alternative to the commissioners, if a majority of us want to support it and make the motion that we have a 1% reduction, which would raise, I think, about 2.7 million. And Mr. Lorenz, you can, our finance director, can correct me. The second thing is, we could take approximately $500,000 out of the reserve.
A million out of reserve?
Would it be a million? Joe, isn't it 3.3?
The shortfall right now, not counting the, anything additional for community mental health, is about 3.1 million.
Is it 2.3 that we raise out of the?
So if you cut all the departments by 1%, that would be worth 2.3 million.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, we'd take the 1%, that 2.3 million, we'd take $1 million out of our reserve, which is over $20 million at this time. And that would give us a budget without a tax increase, and I'd make that motion.
I will second that for discussion purposes. Commissioner, or is that all you wanted to add?
Well, I would say that, just quickly, you know, in other areas, we've seen this sequester at the national level and heard all the things that were going to happen, they didn't happen. I know that we may have to have some furloughs, layoffs. I know that we may have to have some furloughs, layoffs if this passes. The other thing is, we've seen, and I've talked to the airlines, I've been lucky enough to serve on the Airport Authority, thanks to Mayor Boyle some years ago and other mayors along the way, on the Airport Authority, I've heard from the airline people what was going to happen when they reduced budgets, when they were faced with very challenging times. And they've had that almost on a constant basis. And yet those things didn't happen. I've seen a J P Morgan, which unfortunately I'm not related to, have excellent profits and lay off 17,000 people in the past six months, you know, and you read about that in the Wall Street Journal. You know, maybe there's a way for us to really seriously reduce the size of government. And at the same time, I want to commend what's been done in county government, not just by the commissioners, but all of the people, because we still are having a budget that's .08 lower than it was in the previous year. So there have been steps. We haven't just been growing every year. So that's the extent of what I want to say. I know this isn't going to be taken in a positive way by all the commissioners, but it's something I feel we can do. We didn't hear anyone come in here telling us, hey, we're really glad you're increasing the mill levy, you know, and that sort of thing. And that's why I thought about this a lot, and that's where I'm going.
Commissioner Rogers?
Let me build on PJ's point, particularly in, I mean, the spirit in which you offer it. I definitely agree with you offer that. And I'm saying this in the context of, which this could be a debate that we're going for a while. So, I mean, you gave some private sector examples, and they're fair examples, but I don't know the airport's budget or process to some degree, but it's hard to compare that with the county's budget where, you know, J P Morgan, yeah, they probably can lay off people. But as things pick up, they will instantly see the result of that in their budgets as the years go on, whether it be the fees or the things that go. We're not going to see that in the property tax deals. If a house was to sell and all of a sudden the value goes up, that reflection is not going to be there before a year or so. And I think what I'm saying is in the context purely of, let's say, the last four years. Now, you know, everything that comes up, over the last four years, there's been between, somewhere close to like approximately 200 people cut. The budget's decreased. Every year, we've come in with a $5 million structural deficit every year. So if you take that in a whole, and the budget is right now 1.8 below, over the years, that budget's been trimmed down tremendously. Now, you know, you need some economists to talk about whatever the elasticity point is, and everybody has to have their own stomach for that. And everybody's stomach is a little different. Now, at least mine, for the last four years, have been, okay, that's fine, we can take it, we can take it. You know, my elasticity point has come like, you know, for four years, we said, okay, we're going to come out of it. And I just don't know if that's there now. So I guess I say that in respects to, I definitely believe it's there, and I definitely hope that we get to the plan, we can have that strategic discussion over the next year. But I definitely think the points you're making are valid, but I'm saying that in the point of saying, we all are kind of our own gauge of where it's going to go. And I don't think when the budget's lower and we're having to increase to do that, at some point, you've got to take the structural deficit on. Now, the thing is, people don't like the way we address our structural deficit. If it's in the private sector and you've got a structural deficit, you either raise cost on some things, you raise some fees on some other things, and we don't have a lot of options for that. So I'm just discussing, for the sake of discussion, I don't know if putting this off for like another fifth year that we've been discussing gets it there. At some point, we've got to, I think this is the year, honestly, we try to take the structural piece on. And I think this next year, we've got to take that strategic piece and see where everything mows out. So, and I say this from a point of view, the last couple of years, it's been in that same boat, but, you know, at least my personal bottom floor is reached that this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. Couple of concerns with this proposal. I mean, we've gone through all of our meetings with department heads and elected officials and tried to come to agreement as to what is going to be required for them to carry out their functions. And now at the last minute, we say, okay, after all those meetings, now we cut it. First off, I hope that we have learned a lesson and will have another public hearing if we're going to be changing things, because this is what we got sued for successfully last time we did it. We have to start the public hearings all over again to find out the impact on everybody's budget. If we have too much money in our reserves, then we should take it out. We don't have too much money in our reserves. We need to maintain our credit rating. I believe that we ignore things like that. What we should be keeping is our long-term view. We sacrifice for short-term gain, and I am not comfortable with that. I think that we have a good budget crafted. It is a smaller budget in dollars than a year ago. To pretend that this is spending lots of money is just not right. It is a tight and austere budget. And sometimes the reality is that you have to raise the tax rate. Nobody wants to do it. I don't want to do it. But when you cut the budget, sometimes you still need more money to have a balance out. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I agree with Commissioner Duda. In the last three or four budget years, Commissioner Duda and I have been at odds on this budget. And I've been an ally of Commissioner Morgan's back and forth. But this, Commissioner Duda is right, this is a very tight budget. This is less spending than last year. The stars have all aligned, and they're not in our favor. Valuations are stagnant, they're not favorable for revenue. A lot of things are declining. There are some things we can do. I mean, I'm sitting here listening and wondering about the Greyhound people, maybe we ought to take another look at it. I don't know how we can unscramble that egg, but maybe we ought to look at it. So I'm willing to do some of those things to maybe further reduce our spending. So, but the time has come. I mean, in the last four years, I've struggled and voted. I don't believe I've voted to increase the budget. I don't really try to remember every vote I take. But I've tried to vote my, I have voted my conscience every time they come up. And this time, I have to say that my conscience says it's time for us to vote to raise the mill levy. We have to. If you listen to some of the problems that are coming up, that occur spontaneously, you know, and that happen, this is a living organism we're working with. And things happen with psychiatric unit, that happen with corrections, that happen in all these departments. And when things happen like that, we have to respond, and we have to respond, I think, in a responsible way to see that they're still functioning. That's what our job is here. So I am going to be voting to increase the mill levy. I don't want to. I have a lot of family members in town who are working very hard to make ends meet. I have a lot of people in my district who are struggling. But this is what has to be done. It's a very small, meager increase. It's small, I don't like it, but it has to be done. So, and I think we're inviting trouble. I think the elected officials have done a terrific job in coming up with responsible budgets, and I appreciate what Senator, Senator, gee whiz, Commissioner Morgan is suggesting. But I think it's, I think it is not possible. So I'm not going to be supporting his motion.
Commissioner Kraft?
Thank you. And I would really like to compliment Commissioner Rogers on his response about how county government works. As president of the Naco for the past year, you've done a fantastic job, and I think you've taught all of us quite a bit. Years ago, when I was on the Omaha City Council, I was advocating to fund the prosecutor in a manner that would save the police department funds. Okay? By a one cent upfront, we would have saved two cents on the back end that year. But two different departments, and they have their own silos, and they don't know how to work together. Commissioner, actually, that would have been a tenth of a cent to do that, one thing. It was one cent to purchase the cruisers so they wouldn't break down, and I had a call from a constituent who was irate because it took over 20 minutes for the police to respond to robbery. Well, two police cruisers literally broke down on the way to the response, they had to get a third one there. Okay? When you don't maintain things, they aren't maintained. But I tried, for this one thing, to save two cents on the back end for every penny we spent. The one-tenth of a cent, the response from Commissioner, from councilperson Sigerson, was, when is a tax increase not a tax increase? And I said, it's a penny today, it'll be 10 cents later. And guess what? It was not only 10 cents later in our property tax, it was also the 2.5 cent excise tax on eating out, the increase in the will tax. And I figured that out in my own personal income and property taxes. It was 20 cents. It was 20 cents because I eat out quite often and I have a couple cars. So those increases were huge. Now, people think of, I hear Nebraska's the eighth highest state. In 2001, the price per capita, per year, between the eighth highest state and the ninth highest state, it was one penny per capita. So we're all clustered in a very narrow focus. And when we get too myopic, we don't look at the big picture. One of the things Commissioner Duda brought up was the credit rating. We are on the lower side of our reserves according to the bonding, the credit rating companies. We have a major bond issue coming up in a year or two. I believe it's in 2014. And there may be another one in 2018. Okay? Our courthouse security is in dire need. Our courthouse is very insecure. And since the 2006 study, a lot of things have happened in courthouses that could easily have happened in ours. Okay? So we need to make improvements. This board, I'm sure, when the time comes, will vote to lower the tax mill levy. We've done that in the past. It'll be done in the future, because it's not only your dollars, it's our dollars. And I cannot support Commissioner Morgan's motion, but I can't support increasing the taxes at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
You know, from the sounds of the board, it sounds like that it's going to be a vote to increase taxes. I am not going to be one of those people. I am not going to vote to increase taxes. I appreciate Commissioner Morgan, what you're trying to do, and I understand what you're trying to do, but I don't think asking the departments, and I know we've been through the budget process already and it got shut down, a lot of the suggestions, but I don't feel that is, it's right for the people who have come in with a flat budget or below budget, that they get an additional 1%. I think that, I agree with the 1% and possibly even more to the departments or the elected officials who didn't come in flat or below. I don't think we should penalize the departments that have. I think we need to come back with the resolution or amendment to your resolution and say, let's cut all the, all the departments and all the elected officials who didn't come in flat or who didn't come in below, that we need to cut those people to make them equal to the ones who did come in below. So that's my-
Commissioner Duda?
Quick question. Does the across-the-board cut impact the Med Center contribution? Is that, are we cutting that by 1% or are we just cutting county budgets?
I did. I did do some checking on that. We have a contractual agreement. I was trying to find out if we could put that off, even cut it a little more than that. I wasn't able to find that out. You know, and I'm not certain with their construction, you know, we've already paid the $500,000. So, you know, what I was trying to do is just offer an alternative at this point. I know we had some discussions about the 1% at some of our public hearings, and that was what I was trying to do, and I want the commissioners to know that Commissioner Boyle and others, I'm very respectful of our discussion here today and how, Chris, you responded. And, you know, at least it shows that we're trying to work together to do the right thing. And these property taxes, you know, I think there'll be, other things we'll do there, but the difficulty is, even as Roger Morrissey and his people start to raise property taxes as values increase, the challenge is, when you lose $65 million with St. Joe's Hospital coming off the tax rolls, or some of the TIF things that we've seen, and that's a great tool for development and it's helpful, but in some cases, we've opposed those because of the abuses. It's going to be difficult. I hope you're right, you know, that we can, at some point, start to reduce the mill levy. I'd like to see us be able to do that in the future, but in county government, we're so limited because we don't have the advantage of city government with the sales tax revenues and some of those things when the economy starts to move with car sales or other kinds of things. So that's a long response, Commissioner Duda, to your question, but we'll see what happens on the motion and get moving.
Commissioner Rogers?
And I want to say it now, I guess I might say it later, but, I mean, to your response, PJ, I, you know, I just wanted you to know, I definitely appreciate the point you brought up in regards to how Commissioner Boyle said it. And as a whole, you know, the process that was started when you and Commissioner Kraft was chair, which is this process now, and it continued, and everybody that's been in chairs worked through it. I mean, and even the dialogue that we've had with you all throughout at the restaurant and the whole deal, the, I think the effort has been great and, like I said, different people's elasticity points and floors change every year. And like Commissioner Kraft said, you know, I think I was part of doing it a couple of times, and we probably let lower the lid two years in a row based on excess money. So I think that day will definitely come. But, I mean, as far as the process, I think it's hard for the public to criticize that. This process has been long. I think it solved a lot of the concerns probably Commissioner Boyle's had, his stomach's felt a whole lot better about, and I think everybody on the boards had their shot. And I just say that in respects to, you know, the statement I made a couple of weeks ago, you know, the process for me wouldn't be ideologically pure, and I'm fine with the decision, you know, that's going to be made in my own stomach. And at least, you know, if I have to sit out in front of some rowery people, I'm comfortable in making a discussion, you know, so I'll take the shot with that. But just for the process and the point that you brought up, I think this continual process will go this year, and just wanted to commend everybody there on it for the process that we eventually get to. So with that, we'll see where it goes.
Well, and I want to say that, kind of off of Commissioner Morgan's points in terms of, you know, we all, we all see things a little differently. And when Commissioner Morgan and I talked about the resolution we had at the beginning of this to balance the budget, we knew it was a long shot, but I still think it can be done. Having another public hearing to see how the additional 1% was going to affect the budgets, I think is not too much to ask. And then taking the million out of reserves, I still think we'll be okay with the bond issues. But I don't, this isn't personal. If you don't feel the way we do about the budget, then that's fine. I mean, I don't want this to turn into a personal attack on commissioners because we voted a different way. It was just, we see things different than the other ones. It was just, we see things different than the other ones, and that's fine. I just feel that I hear and I've heard through this whole process, not only from the taxpayers that attend, but many discussions with taxpayers about what they have to do in cutting their budgets. And I don't think we should be any different. Every single year, we talk about the same thing. We talk about the structural deficit. We talk about the revenue shortfalls, but the sky hasn't fallen. And I don't believe it will fall if we take one more year and everybody fill the pain with an additional 1%. So that's, that's fine how everybody feels. I'm not, you know, it's just, that's just the way this process works. What I am happy to hear is again, the strategic planning process. Now, some, you kind of laugh at that and make fun of it, but it truly is something that this board needs to come to grips on and do on an annual basis and really learn how to prioritize. Commissioner Tusha, I agree that, you know, it's probably not the best way as across-theboards and, but we've tried to pick and choose the departments and offices and things that, and that, to me, doesn't work. But across the board, having everybody sharing the pain, which it is painful, I'm not disagreeing with that, but to me, that would be the better way to do it. And that's fine. I mean, that's, that's just how you see things and that's how I see things. The other thing that I did talk to the Chief Financial Officer and the CAO about was, throughout this budgeting process, we heard from the taxpayers groups about that we're, we're not a business, but we can adopt business-like practices. And one of the things that I really would like the staff to work on with our department heads is, when you, to form a budget, you form a budget, but I really think they need to see what it means to do a business plan. They have to look at their department, they're the CEO of that business. And I think that will trigger some meaningful thoughts and discussion about ways that we haven't thought of before to increase our revenues possibly in areas that we haven't looked at or decrease our expenses. And so whatever means, I think having the Joe's background in business, where he came from, I think we have the expertise there to be able to work with each departments to show how you do that. And I think this upcoming year, working on that, working on the strategic plan, I think that, that good things will come from that. And, and I hope the full board supports that. But I, I just, and I voted for taxes before, so my tenure on this board has nothing to do with because I don't vote to raise taxes. I have. I just feel that the whole economy yet is in a slump. We're coming out a little bit, but there's still hard times in everybody's personal budget and we should be no different. And so I would be leaning more towards supporting the resolution of balancing the budget without a tax increase.
Commissioner Boyle?
At the beginning of your comments, you talked about just having the elected officials and department heads come up and talk about what would happen if they had a 1% cut. I would not mind if you continued this public hearing for a week and did exactly that, had them come up and talk about what would happen. I mean, I'm in the, I know that, you know, we would like to get this done and voting on today, but if it's useful and if, and if you think it could produce good results, I wouldn't have a problem with extending the public hearing and notifying the elected official department heads to come up and talk about what a 1% cut would do. I, I, I think what is being proposed is, I mean, is possible. It'd be, it's really very difficult for them to do this. I mean, it's, they've really, really cut to the bone, but, I mean, I have other suggestions about how we could cut things, but I don't think I have a second on some of the suggestions. So, I mean, I could, I think every one of us in our own way could balance this budget. But, you know, it's difficult getting a second and it's difficult getting a four votes. So, but I'd be willing to extend this hearing a week to hear what people have to say.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and I'm fairly certain all of us could figure out what the department heads would be saying from what they've said in the past, not only this year, but in past years. I will not be here next Tuesday, so if there's going to be a vote on this next Tuesday.
We have a meeting, is it next Tuesday?
We have a meeting next Tuesday, yes. But I, I have some family things. I will not be here next Tuesday. So I would like to see a vote taken today. I really would.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
I appreciate Commissioner Boyle's suggestion. The only thing is, we'd need four votes here today, I think, to move toward that. And I did say at the outset, you know, that this would be something painful. And I think if we listened to department heads, we'd hear the same thing that I said earlier on the sequester and the federal government of all the things that were going to happen with plane delays and all the things with controllers. We haven't seen it. Now, I hope we don't, but it's been some months and it was really expected and it didn't happen. And that's all. And I think we've had a good discussion with respect to each other, and I would almost say we had a call for the question.
There's a couple more lights committed, and after these, then we'll stop it.
Okay.
Commissioner Duda and Rogers, and then we'll cut off discussion.
Thank you. I still, before we vote on the 1% across-the-board increase, I think we need to be more definitive about exactly what this entails. That's too generic. It doesn't include the Med Center. So what, what's in and what's out? And before we vote, you know, I mean, we've got bond payments and built-in things in our budget that I'm guessing probably are not meant to be included, but I think we have to offer more specificity as to what is actually being proposed to be cut.
Commissioner Rogers?
I just want to follow back on one point you made, PJ. The sky hasn't fallen on the airline industry because Congress officially put money back after people raised hell about waiting at the airports. So that's why the sky hasn't fallen on airplanes.
But there are some other items though, too.
All right. With that, we have a motion and a second on the floor to reduce the, all budgets in county government department and elected officials by 1% and an additional 1%, 1 million out of reserves to balance the budget. Please vote.
Just one moment, please. And Madam Chair, just for the record, your motion just stated is the motion before the board?
Yes. My motion.
It was Commissioner Morgan's motion and I seconded it.
Yes, Madam Chair, but the language itself?
Language?
I can address. Basically, it would be a 1% reduction by all departments and then $1 million taken from reserve, which I believe would come out to about 3.2 or 3 million dollars to cover the shortfall in the budget, about, I believe, 3.2 million. Correct, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Please vote.
The only other question I have in terms of the discussion points we had today was about the additional dollars for the community mental health center. I still believe we should use the encumbered $170,000 for the $150,000 for the psychiatrist. And so I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Boyle?
I, I was going to try to get my motion in, but that's okay.
Okay. Commissioner Rogers?
What, what is your motion again?
My motion is to take, scrap the $170,000 for the electronic health record and use that money as the supplemental for the psychiatrist cost at the community mental health center for $150,000.
Okay. I'd like to speak to your motion.
Okay. Commissioner, okay, wait a minute. Patrick?
Sorry. I wanted to clarify that what you're, what you would be doing then is increasing the budget request of the community mental health center for the upcoming budget by $150,000. And that would come, that would either come out of reserves or it would result in an additional increase to the lev-. So, I don't, maybe you want to clarify that?
No. Huh? Oh, okay. That, yeah, I, I didn't realize it, but that's, wherever the encumbered funds sit, there's a fund that says encumbered funds, and that 170 was encumbered, that's the mon- that's, I want to use 150,000 of that to cover the psychiatrist cost. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I think what I'd like to do is ask you if you would withdraw your motion and if there's a second to withdraw it so that we could consider my motion, which was to reduce these two budgets and fund it. Maybe that would be a cleaner way. If that fails, then do what you're doing.
The one thing I do want to point out, that if we do that, then we have to have an additional public hearing because we would be reducing a elected official's budget along with a, a department budget.
Well, maybe then take it out of our reserve.
Right. That's where it would come from.
Oh, that's what, that's what you're doing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that whole point.
Encumbered funds, they just said, would be the same as taking it out of the reserve because that's where the encumbered funds sit.
Well, but aren't you, aren't you taking away the electronic records?
Yes. There's 170,000 set aside as encumbered funds for electronic health records.
Well, what I'd rather do is, if I could have a conversation, is, rather than do that, I'd rather have you leave it in the encumbered funds for electronic records and just take the money that the department needs out of general funds, out of the, out of our?
Reserve.
Reserves. That way, we, we leave our electronic records intact, which I think all of us support, and we get the 150 out of reserves. I mean, it's a small amount of money in, in the scheme of things.
I was trying to avoid spending both. I was again, I mean, I know, I know, I know what you, I, and I agree. Electronic health records is, is important, but again, what's more important at this particular point in time and to me, what I've heard, was the psychiatrist.
I'd like to offer an amendment then to your motion, that the, the electronic, the set aside, the earmarked 150 for the electronic health records, what, 150 for the?
Psychiatrist.
Psychiatrist funds come out of the general?
Reserve.
Reserves. And that the electronic health records?
Stay as is.
Stay as is earmarked.
Second. Commissioner, Joe?
I just wanted to clarify the mechanics, since we're talking about the, the health center, which is a separate fund. If we would, you would cancel the encumbrance for electronic health records, if you would go that way, then that money would go, be unencumbered and it would be available in the health center fund in those reserves. And then the question, you could go ahead and have a budget supplement, or not a supplement, but modify the adopted budget for this year and increase it by $150,000 and basically then fund that from the health center reserve fund. That would be the mechanics of, of what you were proposing.
And just so to clarify, with Commissioner Boyle's amendment to, that explains my motion, but his motion is to leave that 170,000 encumbered for the electronic health record, take an additional 150,000 from the?
Reserve.
Is the health center reserve fund would be the correct?
You know, that, and that, if you leave it there, then you would have the option, you could either fund it from the, the general fund reserve or you could, depending what you want to do, 150,000 would be another tenth of a cent. You could fund it through additional tax revenues. That would be up to how you wanted to do it.
I would rather do it out of the general, the reserve account rather than increasing taxes.
This is a general reserve, not a health center reserve.
Right, general reserve, right. That's my motion.
Does that, does that, is that right, Joe?
I'm sorry, Ma'am.
So, so out of the health center reserve, we, we have the 170,000 sitting there for the electronic health record.
Right.
Commissioner Boyle's amendment to my motion is to take an additional 150,000 and add it to the 2013-14 community mental health center budget from the reserve to fund the psychiatrists.
Right. And you would leave the, the other encumbered monies.
Right.
In that case, then, I think you would probably fund it from the general fund reserve, 150,000.
Correct.
Right. That's what he's suggesting.
Okay.
We're all on the same page.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Go for it.
Okay. So, you got that amendment?
Where is it seconded?
Commissioner Kraft seconded it.
Everybody, please vote yes.
I'm voting no.
Who said that?
Madam Chair, this on the amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me. Didn't mean to answer for you.
Okay.
That's okay, Mikey.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, we need a motion to approve the 2013-14 budget as presented today.
Motion to approve.
As presented and amended, yes.
And amended, yeah.
One moment, Madam Chair. The amendment just approved was an amendment to the motion?
Oh.
Which now becomes?
Oh, sorry.
The motion, so.
Sorry, forgot about that one.
Move to approve the motion as amended.
Second.
Just a moment, please.
Because it, that wipes out my motion, basically.
Yes.
Ta-da!
Nothing personal.
That's right. That's right.
Okay. And this is on the motion as amended?
Right.
Okay. Now, is there a motion, a motion to approve the budget as amended?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make an amendment to the allocation of the 1.6. And, and even though we're going to raise it, you know, I would like to raise it long, with a thinking long-term. And what we talked about in the meeting, I would ask if the one cent, if one cent of the 1.6 can be exercised under state statute for the ability that we have as a county over a certain size to exercise that on health departments because of our size. And I ask that because what our support is, is basically about close to one cent. And that in a long-term piece will take that off of us for a while and open that fund and open that funding up to address the structural piece. So that, I guess that's what my resolution request is, that one cent of the 1.6 be exercised under state statute to fund the health department.
I hate your dog. I'm sorry, you're sitting there laughing.
Okay. No, that's fine. I like dogs, I'm all right. And, and that one point, that, that one cent will be freed up in the general budget. So that's the motion that I'm asking for to.
Okay, there's no second.
All right.
What I would say, Commissioner Rogers, is that may be, I'm not, I guess I'm not ready to take that plunge this budget year. I think there's, that's a strategic plan that we really should, or strategic point we need to talk about in our plan. I'm not totally against it. I'm not totally supportive of it at this point because it, I just don't think we've thought it through well enough.
Well, let me say this, before it goes totally, I'm bringing it up because it seems like there's some doubt. I don't, the Commissioner Boyle's thinking about it?
I'm getting ready. I was trying, trying to second it.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I say now because you could always take the, you can take the designated levy off. I don't want to, you know, like, like everybody's saying, I don't envy having to come back and have discussion about a tax increase. So if I'm have it, I want to have it once. And what we can always do is come back and take the designation off. it off there, and I think the health department's proven, prudence in using that money, so all the final say would just go for us, but it, but it's a long-term deal, if you want to take the designation off at any point, we could do that, but I don't want to have to have another discussion about a tax designation, so while it's in the loop now, I wanted to bring it up.
Commissioner Boyle.
I seconded your motion because I do want to discuss this, I think it's worth, worth thinking about, what is the purpose and what, what really is the purpose of this, is it, and does it, does it set up another, when we get our tax bills, it says health department, one cent, is that what it's gonna say?
No, I don't think it does.
Is it a new tax, a new taxing entity, I mean, is it a way of camouflaging a tax increase, what is it?
I don't, I don't think it comes up, it doesn't show up on the statement, it's just on how we use it internally, that, that's my understanding of how it's presented, it just, it's pretty much, it designates it there, so it frees it up, it doesn't show up on the, my understanding from how it was presented to me, it does not show up on the statement as a separate deal, now, if Dr. Porkin had more detail to it, this is how they explained it to me, and she's, and her head is shaking, no, it does not show up, it's just internally of how we use it, allocate it, and that's why
And what's, and what's the purpose of it?
Basically, it's just like saying, you know, it's basically, it's freeing up additional general fund money, right now, if, if, if we make this, this, right now, my thought is, like you all are saying, we're making a choice, so hopefully we do it once, by having, and the challenges are always gonna come to some degree, so I figure if we do this now, we just gonna have to wrestle throughout the years on how to prioritize it because this discussion will come up in the strategic planning process, my thought is, if you got $5, you take, you dedicate a dollar to that, which frees it up in the other fund, it gives you more money to play with to address the other long-term structural stuff, if at some point we want to take that designation off, it comes back into play, it's pretty much a way to give us some more flexible money, so we don't have to come back to a tax increase. Because right now, the health department is the only department that's close to really kind of being in another realm of funding, but we still have authority over, we only give a portion of their budget, only about a million plus of their budget is out of general fund, take it out completely, you have more money to address this issue we're gonna continually have with salaries, trying to solve that, that increase that comes, so it's, it's more of a strategic look at trying to address the long-term.
Well, I think it's, oh, excuse me.
You're still on.
I think it's worth exploring, and I think, you know, Commissioner Rogers is explaining it in such a way that we can pull back from it if we want to, and I think we have control to do that, and I think that, you know, I think it's worth, it's worth a yes vote, and I think we ought to do it, so I appreciate your bringing it forward.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, currently, what, what the one cent, okay, the health department, is their current budget, budget the one cent, or is it .9 cent, where is it at?
Oh, I don't know exactly.
Would we be overfunding, would we be overfunding them for this next year?
That, I can tell you, I can't give you the exact amount, but it's not like, like say, your example of .9, no, it's not .9, I would say, for sake of this discussion, it may be like 1.1.
Okay.
But, we, we, we're already balancing the budget 1.6 to cover just what we need in June, so what I'm saying is, whatever the amount is that's there in the health department is there, you're gonna free it up to play with, it's just a way of how we work in numbers.
See, and I don't quite understand it, I, I, I know you explained it, but I just don't
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a better way to explain it.
Understand it.
Let me, let me, let me put it like this, the best way I can, let me, I guess I'm gonna have to use a personal home example, this is the one we use, my wife and I have three accounts, she had a count before we got married, I had a count before we got married, we joined, we put a joint account together to make sure all the bills get paid, everything that needs to get paid from the household is put into the joint account, but we tap all three accounts as needed, only thing I'm saying is dedicate more money to the joint, to my particular account, and I'll pay the light bill out of that account, and because that account won't come out the joint account, that gives us more money to do some other stuff flexibly, and I don't know, I hope that's a good example.
Now, let's
Oh, I'm sorry.
Joe, would it make any difference?
We were just, you know, I think the way this would be handled, if I understand, it would just be similar to the library tax, where it's a separate levy and it, and it would show up.
It would.
It would show up, yeah, as a, as a separate levy on the bottom of the tax bill, and, you know, I can't remember the exact number, but once, if you put a penny there, it would be 1.9 million next year, but then probably, you know, 3.6 million the filing year, and I'm almost positive that the 3.6 million is more than what we're funding the health department for in total, so I think I'd be more comfortable if we could fine tune the number, rather than just saying one cent right now.
Commissioner Boyle, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Thank you, I understand.
Commissioner Kraft, were you done?
That, that helps, I wanted to ask John Ewing if he knew the answer, would it show up as a separate entity on the tax bill?
I would probably agree with
Could you come down to the podium and say
And identify yourself.
Get, get in, get in range, will you please?
John Ewing, Douglas County Treasurer, I believe what Joe is saying is probably true, anytime you add something where you're levying a tax, then it probably would show up, that would be my understanding. I certainly can check further as well.
Thank you, I, I'm done.
Patrick.
Well, I have several concerns, first, it was not advertised as part of the public hearing that this would be part of the budget, and that this would be a separate tax levy, so that's my first concern, my second concern has to do with how much money we're actually allocating to the health department versus the rest of the operations, so you would basically leave six tenths of a cent left for the rest of the operations, we just don't have enough information at this point for us to be confident from the administrative perspective that this is going to accomplish what you intend to accomplish, I guess one, one question I would have for the future would be perhaps, next year, or some future time, we could research the possibility of allocating existing levy and have one cent of the existing levy go towards the health department, or whatever cent, less or more, so for example, one year from now, two years from now, you would have a better handle on this, and you would say, okay, we have 26.49 cents or 28 and a half cents, and we're gonna designate one cent of that for the health department, and then we would just know better than we do right now is what that's gonna mean.
And I'm fine with pulling it, if, if the discussion can be, because it sounds like what you're saying, we wouldn't have to lift the lid, it would just be a disclosure thing of how it's allocated, and if, I'm fine with having that discussion and make sure that, to your point, is precise and doesn't leave a lot of time, so.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, I'm almost moved, I was gonna say, I think I support the concept, or I'm sure willing to consider supporting the concept, I'm not sure we would have to wait a year or two to do it, I think you could wait a few weeks and, and once we have the details nailed down a little bit, a little clearer of what exactly we're talking about, if we're not changing the dollars in the budget, we could consider in a couple of weeks coming back and adding that, I'm not comfortable today, but I appreciate where you're trying to go, and I think it's a good idea.
We'll work on some specifics, I'll bring it to finance in the future with suggestions.
Joe?
To your point, I think really when we could consider it, and the appropriate time to consider it is in September when we set the actual tax levy, because right now, we're just approving the budget, which doesn't necessarily require you to determine how the budget's gonna be financed, and then, you know, once we get the final assessment, we come back and set the tax levy in September, and that would be the point where we could research it and then see if it would be appropriate at that time to set a separate tax levy for the health department.
Not to muddy the water, but I do know, and again, this all goes with, I think, strategic planning on how we want to fund things, because a few years back, Commissioner Boyle actually wanted to do the same thing with law enforcement, and while there's a statute specific to the health department, I don't know if anything stops us from doing that with corrections, and I think we need to have that discussion as well, and his, his thought process, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but his thought process was exactly that, is so that the taxpayer would be able to see that X number of dollars went to the law enforcement portion of Douglas, Douglas County's service, so, anyway, I just, I just throw that in to say that maybe we should have that discussion as well as the health department
I agree.
Discussion with it, but again, a more strategic discussion on it, Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I really appreciate your bringing that up, because I have, when I was active in NACO, I, I really liked, you know, I'm so shy, I like to, I like to, I always played to the crowd, I had a lot, a lot of friends out in the rural part of the
That means Claire, don't laugh, don't laugh.
Sorry.
We know he loves that.
Had a lot, that encouraged me, had a lot of friends out in the, out in the western part of the state, formed alliances with some of the most conservative people you can imagine, just loved it, great people, and we agreed on issues, you know, good, tight, responsive government, and I would stand up and I would, when the governor was, I'd purposely be in the back and I could raise my voice and the governor was in the front, and I'd say, "Governor, you need to take over the criminal justice system in this state, take over the cost of the county attorney, take over the cost of the sheriff," well, I'd start, and the crowd would start, "Hey, hey, hey," pretty soon, you know, I was just almost carried out, so, but anyhow, it was more fun, and I did it to the governor every time, and he'd ask me, he says, "Why do you do that?" and I said, "It's fun." But hopefully, we can get, you know, with this whole tax policy coming up, we can present this as serious matters, because, you know, I haven't spoke to Mr. Ewing about this, but there are some states that issue license plates directly from the capital, and when you, we get our driver's license from Lincoln now, I mean, we have to do some things locally, but I think it's time we start thinking about some of these responsibilities of the state of being, coming from Lincoln, so this is off the beat, but there are things we need to talk about to cut our expenses that really belong with the state.
Yeah, I, I agree, Commissioner Boyle.
Millions.
Lots to look at.
Millions.
Millions. Okay, I guess we're, are we done, did we vote?
No.
No?
Madam Chair, right now, you have an amendment from Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner
Were you gonna pull that? And the second agrees, okay, then, again, the motion, back on the floor, is the original motion to adopt the 2013-14 budget as amended, please vote. To balance it, it would take the 1.6 then, and then that, we would set the tax increase in September.
Motion passes.
Okay. No need for executive session, but Commissioner Kraft has asked for a point of privilege?
Yes, when Commissioner Boyle brought up the governor, there's a very good article in the Prairie Fire this month about a lawsuit against the governor regarding the trans Canada
Pipeline.
Pipeline, thank you, Trans-Canadian Pipeline, and, boy, I wish they hadn't put the camera on me, I just noticed.
Bad hair day, huh?
Bad hair day.
Talking, I'll take it off.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
At least he doesn't do what the mothers did.
But, but it's well worth reading, and it makes reference to a previous column that
I'm gonna find and read also, but I, I think we should all read it, and we'd know a little bit more about the governor, and we'd know more how he responds to people's concerns, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I would like to make just a short comment to the, to the folks who have come here and participated so frequently in our, in our budget proceedings and have really become real partners, and I hope that doesn't diminish their standing in the community, the Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom, they have become insiders, and I don't mean that as a derogatory term, many of the people in this room, Laura and others, and the people who are active with the Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom, they have influenced my thinking, they have helped tremendously in helping us focus on what the real issues are, and helped us stay on, on target, for me, anyway, and the white paper has been very useful, and so I really want to encourage them to stay active, to keep talking to us, some of the things they want us to do, we can't do without legislation, but I am very pleased to hear that Commissioner Borgeson is going to respond in writing, I hope, I'd be glad to participate with her, you deserve to have a response on each one of your recommendations, but please continue to remain active, please continue to ask us to be, and make us be accountable, it helps us a great deal, I think your influence brought about the change in the way we conduct our budget hearings that started with Commissioner Kraft and Commissioner Morgeson, I keep doing that, Morgeson.
Morgeson.
Marianne, and also with, now with Commissioner Duda, so it's a, really a, a good process, and it, it can always be improved, but thank you for your help, it's invaluable.
Yes, and I think that's very well spoken, and the whole board feels that way, and we do appreciate your input and participation throughout our process, and hope to continue.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Are we done? How was it for today?